We'll call the meeting to order, it's 5:30. Let's have a roll call please.
Councilmember Rivas?
Present.
Councilmember Green?
Present.
Councilmember Beltran?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim McCurvy?
Present.
Okay, it's time for all communications on the items for closed session. This is the opportunity to address the city council in any manner scheduled or closed session, unless additional time is authorized by the council. All commentary be limited to three minutes. Does anyone like to address the council?
Is that addressing on anything?
Closed session.
The homeless?
Closed session items.
I don't know if that's closed session. Is that a closed session item?
No.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Okay, is there anyone online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, seeing none, we will now adjourn to closed session and return at 6:30. Acting, excuse me, acting city manager, please send us out.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tim. Tonight for council's closed session, we have three items to discuss. The first item is Government Code Section 54956.9D3, Conference of Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation, Two Cases in Which Facts Are Not Yet Known to Potential Plaintiff. Number two, Government Code Section 54956.9D4, Conference of Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation, One Case. Number three, Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Employment, Title, City Manager.
Thank you Acting City Manager, Mr. Knight. And we will now leave for closed session and reconvene at 6:30 for open session.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Rivas. And then if you would please remain standing for invocation, but before we go into the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to take a moment of silence for, and if you look at some of our officers tonight, they have ribbons on their badges, and it's because a fellow officer was killed in the line of duty. Samuel Riveros, ten-year veteran out of Baldwin Park, was killed in the line of duty. So we'd like to take a moment of silence recognizing his honor. Councilman Rivas?
At this time, we'd like to pleasure pledge allegiance. Ready? Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anybody would like to come forward and give an invocation, this is the time. I've not seen anyone, so please be seated. Oh, we got someone. Charles, are you? Okay, please be seated.
I'm assuming it's like a prayer?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dear Lord, first of all, first and foremost, we want to give you thank you for our opportunity to be here, Lord. Without you, we know nothing is possible, Lord, but with you, everything is possible. We want to give, we want to do nothing but just give you thank you for the opportunity to be here, Lord, because we aren't, we don't deserve to be here, but with your mercy, we are. Thank you for everything, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Is there anyone else? Okay, please be seated. Okay, we have a couple presentations. We're starting with Employee of the Month, Acting City Manager Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we have a presentation of Employee of the Month to Enrique Lara. I've asked Chief Costello to provide the presentation.
Thank you. I figured it was easier to come around since the next presentation, there are going to be a lot more people up here, so a little bit easier to maneuver. So I'd like to invite Sergeant Enrique Lara, please. I know he's here. Sergeant Lara grew up locally and graduated from Strathmore High School. After graduating from high school, he served in the United States Air Force as the, as a security forces member for over four years. After his honorably discharged from the military, Enrique attended and graduated from the College of the Sequoias to Larry King's Basic Police Academy, graduating top of his class. In August of 2013, he was hired by the Porterville Police Department, and since joining the department, he has several assignments. One was as a patrol officer, field training officer, a detective in the narcotics unit, police corporal within the patrol and investigations division, and also a sergeant, and also both the patrol and investigations division. Sergeant Lara is currently supervising the professional standards and training unit, supervising pre-employment backgrounds, internal affairs investigations, departmental training, post-training, police policy management, press information, and the department's crime prevention unit. Recently, Sergeant Lara was given award for professional standards and training team, recognized for his excellence in achieving gold standard, which is the highest achievable in policy management from our policy provider, Lexipol. This is consistent in our training plan, our effective policy dissemination to all our personnel, timely policy updates as laws change, and training for all our police officers and civilian staff. During his time away from work, Enrique enjoys attending sports events, playing golf, which he's really not that good at because I just played golf with him. He says he likes playing it, but I don't know if he was really playing it. Spending time with his friends and family, traveling, he enjoys spending time with his wife Janitzi and their daughters Amelia and Adalina. Congratulations to Sergeant Lara for being the City of Porterville's Employee of the Month.
Mr. Lara, you don't get off that easy. We gotta get a speech here, the cameras and everything.
I apologize. With Chief's call, and I figured I could hit the driving range before they close, so. Clearly, that's not going to happen. I'd like to thank my chief, all my admin staff, my mentors, everybody that I work with. It's been great. Thank you, folks. City Council, thank you for the support. It's much appreciated, and God bless America.
I second the God bless America. Can we take a picture with you, sir? We'll move on to the second presentation, Minachi High School critical incident.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked Chief Costello to also provide that presentation as well.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Knight. Mayor, members of council, Porterville Police Department believes in the recognition of police officers for their actions and outstanding efforts in the service they provide to this city. But I also think it's equally important to recognize persons in this community because it highlights how everyone comes together during critical moments of our lives. It shows how the police department cannot be alone in its efforts to take everyone together to protect, it takes everyone in the city together to protect the city. In keeping with this philosophy, the Porterville Police Department and the Porterville Fire Department asked Chief Carver to come up here with me. We'd like to publicly recognize several public safety personnels from both the police department and fire department, as well as imperial ambulance, for their life-saving efforts during a critical incident at Minachi High School. In addition, we would also like to recognize several individuals in this community who live and work in this community for their outstanding efforts on that day. A little background on this incident, on Monday, May 19th, 2025, the Porterville Police Department responded to Minachi High School for reports of a student who had been assaulted. At the time of occurrence, the student was seated in the classroom with the suspect entering unannounced and violently attacked this individual with a large knife, resulting in a significant injury. The victim did not know the suspect, and it did appear to be a random attack. The teacher present in the classroom, Mr. Robert Sundry, without hesitation grabbed a chair and charged the suspect. This act caused the suspect to cease his attack and undoubtedly saved the student's life and other students in that classroom. As the attack occurred, other educators came to provide life-saving efforts to the victim, provide critical information to the responding officers, the Porterville Fire Department, and personnel with Imperial ambulance, the paramedics. Immediately thereafter, the suspect fled the high school from the scene. Within minutes, Porterville police officers observed an individual walking in the area of Henderson and Prospect Street and noticed some of his physical characteristics matched that of the suspect, and that reported by school staff. Police engaged the suspects who made verbal threats of harm to the officers, but without Police engaged the suspects who made verbal threats of harm to the officers, but without hesitation, they utilized their training, were able to take the suspect into custody, confirming it was the suspect in this heinous crime. The Porterville Police Department Detective's Unit assumed this investigation, worked tirelessly and diligently for multiple days but many hours that day at the high school, ensuring all aspects of the investigation were submitted to the district attorney for proper prosecution. At this time, I would like to invite up the police, fire, and ambulance personnel. We would like to recognize, please come up, and then my command staff, please also. We'd like to recognize and extend our deepest gratitude to the Porterville Police Officers, the police detectives, the communication dispatchers, the fire and medical personnel, also the school staff for their coordinated efforts, compassion, and professionalism in immediate response to this critical incident. Their quick actions ensured that the safety of the other students and staff on the school site were safe, greatly assisted in the quick apprehension of this suspect. In face of random and senseless acts of violence, their courage and dedication and commitment provided security to all the students and others in our community and made a profound difference that day, which this could have been extremely worse. We are commended to all those involved in public safety for their courage, service, and upholding the highest standard of public safety. Everybody come up that was involved. Public safety, please come up, all that was involved. So as they come up, I'm just going to read their names of all that was involved from the Port...
If you would come through here and in line.
From the Porterville Police Department, one of the commanders that oversaw the initial investigation, Lieutenant Orlando Ortiz, Sergeant Maria Agüillón, Sergeant Daryl Locke, Corporal Gerald Skiles, School Resource Officer Sarahí Jimenez, School Resource Officer Laura Torres Salcedo, School Resource Officer Ruben Ingram, Police Officer Jasmine McAllister, Police Officer Ruben Rodriguez, Police Officer Daniel Vargas, Police Officer Daniel McAllister, Police Officer Miguel Dela Cruz, Detective Sergeant Nathan Bray, Detective Alejandro Curras, Detective Cameron Anderson, Detective Angel Flores, Detective Jamelix Vieira, Communication Dispatcher Kim McCray, Community Dispatcher Gary Collins, and from the Porterville Fire Department Battalion Chief Isaac Bueller, Fire Captain Mark Graves, Firefighter Alexis Ayon, Firefighter Marvin Santizo, Firefighter Jordan Miranda, and Firefighter Julia Manus. That's a weird last name. Just joking, just joking. Imperial ambulance, if they're here, are they here? We'd like to recognize them if they're here or not. Paramedic Daniel Barrera, EMT Daniel Brown. Thank you to all the first responders that are in front of you now, what they do and what you may not know, but another critical incident was going on at the same time as this one, which spread thin public safety in the city, but we were able to handle two critical incidents happening at the same time. Also, would like to personally thank my command staff, Captain Josh Manus, who oversaw the critical incident in command of the Manachi incident, Captain Ron Moore, who is not here tonight, but thank him because he was our patrol division commander, also overseeing another critical incident happening at the same time, and also Assistant Chief Dominic Bartow. So thank you all, and we appreciate everything that you do. So... So we're not done. So I'm going to ask the public safety to have a seat and maybe stay in the back room for us. If I could now have the following Manachi High School personnel come up, if they're here, please. Principal Shonda Walker, Assistant Principal Jacob Kaiser, Assistant Principal Jonathan Dotson, Educator Seth Ishida, Campus Supervisor Scott Poncio, Campus Supervisor Shelley Plastin, Campus Supervisor Jesús Cardinal, School Nurse Christie Clark, and School Nurse Esperanza Padilla. And after this one, I'll have a couple more presentations. So I also wanted to recognize Manachi's school staff that assisted in this critical incident, not only helped us in securing the campus, but helped render medical treatment to one of the students. If it wasn't for them, we also wouldn't be able to do our job effectively or safely at any of the schools. It's a partnership with the districts that the police department has to ensure safety for all our administration staff that's in front of you now, the safety of the educators and the safety of the students. So I wanted to personally recognize them with certificates of appreciation from the city and the police department also, and Captain Manus will hand those out. So thank you again for everything that you did that day, too. So lastly, we would like to recognize and honor Mr. Robert Sundry, if he could come up. I guess not lastly, I got a couple more things, I'll kind of let this thing go off for a little bit. Mr. Sundry's quick thinking courage and selfless actions prevented what could have been a devastating tragedy to our community. In the face of immediate danger and threat, Mr. Sundry intervened and stopped a violent incident, protecting lives and safety of our students and staff. His bravery in the face of danger was unwavering. It's an unwavering commitment to the school, but also to his city. It exemplifies the very best of what it means to be an educator and a protector. The police department and the City of Porterville are deeply grateful for his heroism and steadfast dedication. His actions in mind not only save, in my mind, not only save lives, but it should remind us all the strength and commitment, compassion that we have in this community. Thank you to Mr. Sundry for his extraordinary courage. I would like at this time to present him with a life-saving plaque on behalf of the Porterville Police Department and the City of Porterville. Please stay up here, Mr. Sundry. I swear I'm almost done. I've asked Mr. Sundry to please stay up here. So the Porterville Police Department responds to around 70,000 or 80,000 incidents a year. Some of those calls involve children or teenagers who are victims of violent crimes, as police officers, myself included. These calls are, that we respond to, remind us forever of why we're doing the job and forever why our mission is to prevent it. At this time, I would like to invite the Rodriguez family up. Was directly impacted by this senseless act of violence at Manachi. Was given permission to talk a little bit about this. So the Rodriguez family went through an incident which obviously needs physical and emotional healing, and we as a police department wanted to make sure. Lisetti and the Rodriguez family knew that they weren't alone in this healing process here in the city and offered our support in what the process looks like from here and how we can explain the prosecutorial process with the assistance of the district attorney's office. We've kept in contact, supported her and her family, informed them on the steps that we will be taking to prosecute this thoroughly and to the full extent of the law. It is at this time that I would, the fire chief is already up here, but I would like to present the family with a word of courage. And it's defined as this, courage is defined as the ability to do something that frightens one but strengthens through the face of pain or grief, and I think that's exactly what she did and what this family did. This is exactly what they're doing. As police officers, we don't look for medals or awards, neither does the fire department, but individuals like Mr. Sundry and this family before you deserve all the credit for what they went through. So we'd like to present her and the family with a plaque of courage, and I can read that real quick before we present it. But it says, "In grateful recognition of your extraordinary courage, strength, and resilience during the critical incident on the 19th of May of 2025." And I mean, this family deserves that, and we will be here for them through this entire process and answer any of their questions, so thank you. And as I wrap this up and take a couple pictures, Mr. Sundry, I will invite you, if you would like to speak or not, the mic is going to be open, and then also for the Rodriguez family, if they want to say a few words after Mr. Sundry.
I'm not really sure exactly what to say. This is new to me and hopefully never happens again, but my heart goes out to the family. Lisette was, I can't even describe it, but she was incredibly brave, and I was very impressed with this young lady. I was very impressed with the Manachi staff. I saw Mr. Ishida, I told him to call the emergency, and he called, and the staff was there very, very quickly. So the principal was there, the vice principals, the nurses were there, the supervisors were there, and my heart goes out to, you know, well, thank you so much, Manachi. And they were there after the situation for days, asking if I was okay, and, you know, checking up on me and giving me the hugs, you know, the hugs actually felt great. And the police department. My mind was going a million miles an hour after the situation, and the police, the police that interviewed me knew that, and they were extremely professional about how they asked me questions and very patient and very understanding of the whole situation. And first responders were there. I just, you know, I want to, I'm so glad everything worked out the way it did. I wish it didn't have happened, but I'm so glad with the response from everybody that was involved, so thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to just take a time to... Chief, do you have more? Would you like to come and say something, sir? Okay. I would just, I would just like to take the moment to, one, state that the challenge coin I gave all of you has our city motto, "In God we trust," and I believe today with God has his hand on our community and helped with this situation. It could have been a lot worse. To Robert, courage is what you showed. It's the greatest virtue. Without it, no other virtues exist. And what you did, your actions possibly saved her life and other students on the campus. And so with, with that virtue of courage, it gives the second greatest virtue, which is honor. And so it's a great honor to have you all in here today and to give you the honor you deserve for the actions you took that day. I'd like to pass it to my council, my colleagues, if you guys would like to say anything. Councilman Beltran, do you have any comments?
No, just the sentiments that the mayor stated. I'm an employee of the PSD for 29 years, and those are days that you hope don't happen. So glad that all the training, all those fire drills or critical incident drills, you know, everything looked like it worked out properly and just again, we never want to be recognized for something like this, but I'm glad that those individuals were there on that campus there for the students and for the community that they all came together. Seeing all the first responders come up here, just for the community to see that when you call 911, the cavalry's coming, whether it's police, fire, even the ambulance, those personnel. So it's just a great recognition again of those individuals that step up to serve our community. So just, it's an honor to just be a small part of this recognition ceremony, so thank you, guys.
Councilman Green?
I think, have a little bit of understanding how the family and my thoughts and prayers are with you. I have a grandson at Manachi High School, so I knew what was going on that day first, kind of firsthand. And thank God for the teachers, for, the teacher probably averted a catastrophe, but our thoughts and prayers are with you, and thank you, sir, for your courage, and God bless you.
Councilman Rivas?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you for everybody that responded, took charge of the situation and the crime scene that evolved from it. I want to, I know what it means to be in I want to, I know what it means to be involved in critical situations. I used to be in the prison system for almost thirty-three years. So, those times do come and you, you act and you react. And I appreciate everything that you've, you've done from the fire department, first responders from the police department, from the commanding center of the Porterville PD. We have an exceptional, exceptional staff that responded and took action greatly. Mr. Robert Sundry, thank you so much. It could have been a lot worse. My prayers go out to the family, the Rodriguez family. Time, time will heal, but, you know, seek counseling because it's there for a reason. It's nothing that you did wrong, it's just some people have mental issues. And unfortunately, you know, it could have been a lot worse. I just want to say thank you for the community for standing strong, staying together, praying that everything works out the way it should because it could have been a lot worse. And I just want to extend my full gratitude and for everybody that was involved and thank you so much.
Vice Mayor McMurvy.
I just want to say it's a great honor to be here to go through this process of healing, recognition, understanding. You know, I said last week from the dais that when someone comes and attacks one of us, they attack all of us. And you can see tonight as we come together in the unity of our community that we stand to serve each other and protect each other. And along with courage being the greatest virtue, the virtue to give yourself and your life, or at least risk your life for someone else is the greatest, it's the greatest act of love. And that's just something that I wanted to say. And it reminds me of our motto, we talk about "In God We Trust." And we're so blessed in this community to have that as our motto. And that's the, the second motto of the United States. The first motto is "E Pluribus Unum." And it's a Latin phrase that out of many, one and of one, many. And we see that here tonight in this community as we come together as individuals to serve each other and protect each other. And I would just like to say my heart goes out to everyone that went through this and just continue to talk about it openly. Let's get closer together as a community so that we can work through this process together and continue to protect each other as we go through these times. And you never know when these things are going to happen. So, remember this phrase, always alert, nobody hurt. And I really just would like to say it's an honor to be here with so many professionals and so many people that are dedicated to the faith and the families in this community. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearings at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes.
Sherri Shields back again on the homeless situation. The million dollars that disappeared from this city for the homeless people, that was not used properly. I was given paperwork that I've requested and it took about two months to finally get all the paperwork. It's incorrect on where the funds went. The funds for the homeless should have not been taken to pay salaries for officers. Can we stop this until people leave?
Yeah, you go hold, stop at 2:30. All right, Sherri, the floor is yours.
Okay. I still ask where the one million dollars for the homeless went? Was received in September of 2024. How much is left? I request the information and the paperwork that I received, I don't like the invoices when I see that it's officer salaries, plants at a thousand dollars, custodial supplies, fence repairs, bills, groceries that the homeless didn't get, special consumables. What's that, pot? We got a lot of pot in this town, a lot of pot places, which I'm not for. The groceries, Krispies, waters, food for the armory. Nobody homeless ever got any food from the armory. I think that you all need to find out where this money really went to. And because Bill Asale, who is investigating this, even though you, Mr. Mayor, wrote a letter to try to kind of ward off the city of Porterville, we got to sit there and smirk at me. Regarding your letter stating, you know, how much you care for the homeless, which you don't, you said that you guys helped about four hundred people. You didn't, you scraped them off the streets. They're like bubble gum, you don't like them. Nobody really likes the homeless. I don't like it. I, I would rather see them in homes and see them working. But you know what? We don't have any work in this town. You guys have jobs, people like me, I grew up in a job era. There is no jobs in this town. Bringing in some jobs to create around here. We don't need an eighty million dollar library. You have buildings all over town that you could use for the library. The one we have now works just fine. I go down there, I don't have a problem with it. And the money needs to be found. And like I said, anybody else can ask for these reports, money and reports that were given to me from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, the money wasn't given until twenty-five. You all want to sit around smirk and you want to not explain where the money went to. Those homeless didn't eat those plants that you bought for a thousand dollars. Those homeless didn't fix the fences and break the fences. They didn't break your, I know, wrap it up, Sherri. They did not break your bridges.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Shields.
Thank you, I'll use my thirty. They did not break your bridge. What you ought to fix out there, you got a square triangle, as it walked in here, that anybody home, anybody like me can trip over. It's about this big. If you need, I'll bring a tile from my house and I'll glue it down out there. But you got a hazard right outside your front door that you can't even fix. But you got all these employees. So, find the money. Bill Asale will be looking for you and he's going to be asking where the money went. It's not supposed to be used on wages. Have a great day.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kristi Martin. I'm here on behalf of the Porterville Chamber. And I've just got a couple of updates that I want to give and a couple of upcoming events. This Friday, we have our next First Friday Coffee coming up. This is with our host Eagle Mountain Casino. And this month, we will be at the Tap House instead of the Galaxy Theater. So, if you usually come to see us for that event, just make sure to note that change. If you go and the theater is black, we're over at the casino at the Tap House. So, still the same time, seven AM. So, come see us over there. Then coming up in July, we have a couple of events. We have a ribbon cutting coming up on July twenty-fourth with Beaufort Frames. So, we'll have more information coming out about that. A Business After Hours, it'll be a multi-chamber event. So, ourselves and some of the other regional chambers with Eagle Mountain Casino on July thirty-first. So, again, more info will come out about that soon too. And then just a quick update on our Mighty One Ninety Committee. We recently had our strategic planning session. It was really great, the information that we had that came out of that. And we had four priorities that were identified. One being establishing a budget, the second being developing marketing plan, third being to create subcommittees, and fourth being to bring in more partnerships and connections. And internally, we're just working on some new resources. We're really excited to be rolling out in the second half of this year. Those things include an online community and a resource library, our member-to-member deal program, and some workshops and trainings for our businesses and nonprofits. And that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Hello, folks. My name is Derek Holt. Recently, on the twenty-fourth of last month, I was traveling out to the casino. I have an electric bike, plenty of power, does thirty miles an hour. The headlight on it is a three thousand lume LED headlight. The rear tail light on it is nice and bright, real red. You can't miss me. Somehow, somebody decided to miss me because they hit me. Well, yeah, they hit me and what I was going to say was, man, when the casino was all the way up on the hill, our city had no problem providing a bus shuttle to go up there. I want to say that they shared expenses with the casino. Anyway, during the course of this accident, I'm wearing the shorts that I was wearing when I got hit. My pocket, my cargo pocket on my right side was ripped off. I had an external battery to charge my phone and a envelope. They had somewhere about sixty-eight hundred dollars. A few days before, I had gotten paid from an accident that I got into three years ago over on Jay and Olive. Took three years to get paid out on that one, I don't know why. Considering it was a teacher across the street at Porterville High School. But somehow it did. Anyway, I was just saying, you know, you guys need to get together with the casino and figure out a way to get people back and forth or maybe put a nice sidewalk on the side of the road with some grass and some trees to where it looks nice. And as far as the money, like the other lady was saying, the money with the homeless, I'm not worried about all that. I mean, I know where that went, you guys know where that went too. And hey, you guys say you trust in him? Trust in him because, well, lady, that we, those shops are open for, they come from that guy right there. He put those seeds on this earth for you and for me. Whether you want a part of it or whether you don't, hey, that's on you. But me, I like it, I enjoy it. Makes me feel good, helps out with my pain, especially since it's been a car accident. I've been a roofer since I was thirteen. But hey, you know, like, you guys have a good one. Like, I'm not going to stick around because there's, you guys aren't going to come to a conclusion of whether or not you're going to have something figured out there at the casino with the bus. But there's one other thing. I did go out to the casino and tried to talk to the elders about an idea that I had for helping them get people to spend more money at their casino. Not one of those wagon burners let me talk. Not one of them let me say anything. Did I get to talk to any elders? No, because I'm just another man, you know? I don't have nothing too important for them. But what I was going to tell them was something that every casino from Sea to Shining Sea should have is comfort for the guests. I'm not talking about a hotel. I'm talking about from the time they get out of the vehicle or get off the bus to get on a little rascal or whatever you, you know, something like that to where they can move around. And the casino, shut that off, please.
Please summarize in thirty seconds, sir.
I will. To where they can move around, get around the casino and not tire themselves out because they're elderly, they have broken legs, they can't walk, whatever the case may be. But they can go and enjoy their time at the casino. Anyway, that's all I have to say. You guys have a good one and maybe you guys figure something out. Hopefully, this doesn't happen to no one else. And I hope that little girl from Manachi is all right.
Thank you, Derek. If there's anyone else, please come forward at this time. I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. We'll move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. And all items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. How would council like to go forward? Okay, I, I'd like to pull agenda item number five.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number six.
Okay, so we have five and six. Is there any other agenda items that I'd like to be pulled? Okay, so I'll make a motion for consent calendar items one through four, seven through twenty to go forward.
I'll second that motion.
If there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. Okay, call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay. Moving on to the public hearing, Acting City Manager Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have one public hearing before council. I've asked Director Calderon to present that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. The applicant, the Temple Praised Christian Fellowship located at twenty-two, two-one-three Avenue one fifty-two is requesting a second modification to its conditional use permit, amending the requirements for a three-bin trash enclosure with the use of commercial can refuse service. The modification includes constructing an appropriate enclosure that complies with city standards to contain the required refuse bins. On May first, twenty eighteen, the city council approved the conditional use permit allowing the establishment of a religious facility for Temple Praised Christian Fellowship. And on December ninth, twenty twenty, the church leadership submitted a request for accommodations related to the required paved parking lot and trash enclosure. And that required an approved amendment to that conditional use permit. So, on April sixth, twenty twenty-one, the city council adopted Resolution oh-six, twenty twenty-one, approving the modification number one to the conditional use permit. This allowed for a temporary gravel parking and residential bin collection through April first, twenty twenty-six. On December fifth, twenty twenty-four, staff received a second request from the church leadership asking to permanently replace the three-bin trash enclosure required with commercial can service. The project is consistent with general plan, land use designation, and zoning standards for RM three, which is the high-density residential. This zone allows for a range of public and semi-public uses, including religious facilities, with an approved conditional use permit. And the requested modification is therefore consistent with zoning district and general plan. Field services staff reviewed the request and confirmed that the commercial can services with a compliant enclosure is functionally acceptable. The revised enclosure will be constructed to meet all applicable city or Porterville standards. Pursuant to Section six oh-four point oh-four, the Porterville Development Ordinance, the city council must make the following findings to approve a conditional use permit or any modification thereof. So, the first is, so approval of the proposed project will advance the goals and objectives and is consistent with the policy of the general plan and any applicable plan that the city has adopted. And the project is consistent with general plan and the allowed uses under its corresponding general plan, land use designations of high-density residential, which allows for religious facilities with conditional use permit, and also promote a sustainable, balanced land use pattern that responds to existing and featured needs of the city, future needs of the city, and allow and encourage efficient infill development in existing neighborhoods. The location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed project are consistent with those, the purposes of the district where it is located and conforms to all significant respects with the general plan. Thus, this development ordinance and with any other applicable plan adopted by the council. The project complies with two oh-two point oh-two and six oh-four point oh-four and all other sections of the Porterville Development Ordinance. It also complies with the general plan and there are no other plans that apply to this property. Also, on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, the environmental coordinator made a preliminary determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, pursuant to Section fifteen, three oh-one, which is existing facilities of the California Code of Regulations. As part of the project, as the project does not propose any physical modifications or expansions of the facility and includes only a negligible increase in the approved operational parameters. So, the recommendation tonight is that city council hold a public hearing and consider any public testimony concerning the proposal modification number two to the conditional use permit. Find that the proposed project is exempt from the CEQA, Section fifteen, three oh-one, Existing Facilities in California Code of Regulations, and adopt the attached draft resolution approving modification number two to the conditional use permit, Resolution twenty-six, twenty eighteen. And the applicant is in the audience and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Director Calderon. With that, we'll open the public hearing at seven seventeen. If you'd like to come forward, please come forward at this time. I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at seven eighteen and bring it back to council. Does council have any questions? Not seeing any. How would council like to go forward with this?
I'll make the motion to approve staff recommendations, items two and three.
I'll second that.
Okay, call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay, moving on to the Passes five zero. Okay, moving on to the second reading, uh, City Attorney.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take this one. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so tonight, for council's two items that represent a second reading, the first item of which is ordinance number nineteen-ten, an ordinance of the city of Porterville, amending Chapter fifteen, Article seven of the Porterville Municipal Code, cannabis dispensaries, modifying hours of operation, premises security, restricting deliveries, regulating drive-through operations, and additional minor clarifications was given, first reading on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and has been printed. Staff's recommendation is the council give second reading to the ordinance nineteen-ten, uh, waiving further reading and adopting said ordinance, a reading title only.
Okay, thank you, Acting City Manager Knight. Uh, bringing it back to the council. Does council have any comments? Councilman Beltran? No comments. Councilman Green? Councilman Rivas?
No com- no comment.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
Okay, I have no comments either. How would you like to go forward?
I'll read by title only for you. Ordinance number nineteen-ten, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Porterville, amending Chapter fifteen, Article seven of the Porterville Municipal Code, cannabis dispensaries, modifying hours, is that right? Am I reading the right one?
Yeah.
Not modifying hour, no. Oh, yeah, sorry. Modifying hours of operation, premises security, restricting deliveries, regulating drive-through operations, and additional minor clarifications. Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you. So we, we, there's a learning curve for myself. We don't have to take action on this. It's just a second reading.
You took action and then we read it.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to-
Clarification, we had a, we had a motion and a second?
No, we never voted on that. That's why-
When you said that, it made me think you guys did a motion and a second. So appreciate the clarification. Thank you. It's just a reading only.
Oh, it's just a reading only. Okay, that's, all right. So moving on to, uh-
Well, they just said reading only.
No, we need action on it.
We, we do need action. So with that, council, uh, that's why, when you did the second reading, I was like, hey, this is-
We don't need to read it by title only since I already did it, but we do need a vote on it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation. Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Passes four one. Okay, moving on to agenda item number twenty-three, Acting City Manager Knight.
Let's try this again.
Yes, sir.
Before council tonight is item number twenty-three, ordinance number nineteen-eleven, an ordinance of the city, of the city council of the city of Porterville, amending Chapter twenty-one, Series two-hundred and three-hundred of the Porterville Municipal Code, adding cannabis dispensaries as a permitted use in the CG general commercial zone and making minor, uh, topographical corrections was given first reading on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and has been printed. Recommendations that the city council give second reading to the ordinance number nineteen-eleven, waive further readings and adopt said ordinance after reading the title only.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Does council have any questions for staff? I'm not seeing any. I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. Passes four one.
Permission for the city attorney to read by title only.
Si- City Attorney.
Ordinance number nineteen-eleven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Porterville, amending Chapter twenty-one, Series two-hundred and three-hundred of the Porterville Municipal Code, adding cannabis dispensaries as a permitted use in the CG general commercial zone and making minor topographical corrections.
All right. You have something?
I'm ready for the next one.
All right, we're moving on to, uh, agenda item number twenty-four, City Manager. Acting City Manager.
For council's consideration tonight, I believe we have four items now scheduled for, uh, scheduled matters, the first of which is number twenty-four, uh, consideration of appointment to the Arts Commission, and I've asked Director Undari to provide that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. The city's art commission consists of five members plus a one youth member representing various areas of the arts, including theatrical, performing arts, visual graphics, and music. Members serve a staggered three-year term. Currently, there are three vacancies on the Arts Commission, two regular seats with terms expiring in July twenty twenty-five, and one regular seat with a term expiring in twenty twenty-six. A request for reappointment has been received, oh, sorry, a request for appointment has been received from Mr. George Albañez, and the request is attached for the city council's consideration. Additionally, um, an application was received after the agenda was published from Ms. Jackie Butiche. Uh, staff recommends that the city council also consider the application, and if desired, appoint the applicant to the open position. While the current term is set to expire in July twenty twenty-five, we recommend extending the appointment to a full term ending in July twenty twenty-seven so that we don't have to bring another item forth next month. The recommendation is that the city council consider the appointment of George Albañez to a term set to expire July twenty twenty-six, and Jackie Butiche to a tr- term set to expire in July twenty twenty-seven, and direct staff to continue to solicit individuals to serve. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Okay, uh, bringing it back to council, uh, is there any questions?
None.
Okay.
Make a brief comment. This reminded me, um, I think since we've been on council, um, as, as far as the mayor and myself uh, over the last two and a half years, the Arts Commission hasn't really had any projects, but that reminded me about, we used to have music on Main Street down at Centennial Park and stuff. So I don't know if we can collaborate or kind of work and figure out some projects that we can throw at the Arts Commission.
Okay.
So, that was all.
I, I like the idea. Um, with that, you know, uh, people wanting to dedicate themselves and, and uh, provide community service, I, I'd make a motion that we bring George, George and Jackie on. I, I, I'm not gonna name them by last names, but that's my motion.
Mayor, if you don't mind, can I add to that? Um, it's a three-year term, so the term would end in twenty, uh, twenty twenty-eight and not twenty twenty-seven for, uh-
Clarification, yeah, okay.
Sorry.
So we have a motion on the table? Do, do you have other comments, Derek?
No.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any other comments? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay, moving on to agenda or schedule matter number twenty-five, uh, Acting City Manager Knight.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. The next item is consideration of updates to unauthorized camping regulations and policies, including the development and implementation of a reunification program for individuals experiencing homelessness. I've asked the city attorney to provide that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, Mayor, members of the council. The city's ordinance, regulating unsafe and unauthorized camping and storage of personal property, the protection of critical infrastructure, and mitigation of harm to the public health, safety, and welfare, was implemented, implemented approximately one year ago. Since the implementation, a key U.S. Supreme Court decision was issued, and strategies and challenges to addressing the homelessness crisis continue to evolve. Purpose of this item tonight would be to present for council a consideration of a draft ordinance updating the city's unauthorized camping regulations, and to initiate discussion on the development of potentially a reunification program aimed at assisting individuals experiencing homelessness. The updated ordinance reflects legal and policy changes consistent with the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Johnson v. Grant's pass, um, additional recent state guidance, and feedback received from the city council during prior discussions. Draft ordinance amends, uh, Article seven of Chapter eighteen of the code to provide a clearer and more streamlined framework for regulating unsafe and unauthorized camping and the storage of the personal property within the city. It seeks to balance the city's obligation to protect the public health, safety, and welfare with the legal rights and dignity of individuals experiencing homelessness. The ordinance would clarify restricted areas where the camping is prohibited, including those near critical infrastructure, emergency shelters, schools, playgrounds, and other sensitive locations. It also outlines procedures for the enforcement and handling of personal property in a manner that aims to be both lawful and humane. These updates are necessary to address ongoing public safety, sanitation, and access issues while reinforcing the city's continued efforts to provide shelter and services to those in need. The updates, uh, specifically also include a proposed minimum twenty-four notice, twenty-four-hour notice instead of a minimum seventy-two-hour notice prior to, uh, to implementing any of the enforcement mechanisms while maintaining the city's ability to provide even shorter notice in specific or what we would call exigent circumstances or urgent circumstances. And two, a suggested shorter minimum period for storing certain personal property, adjusting that period from ninety to sixty days. Also attached is the current Critical Infrastructure Resolution describing the restricted public property along with the associated limitations and buffer zones um, for review by the council for consideration of any potential changes to that. Additionally, for the city council's information and reference, the model ordinance published by the governor in May is attached for your information and reference purposes. The model takes a different approach by purporting to ban, um, camping on all public property, but providing for longer periods before allowing notice and or removal of the campsites. In addition to the ordinance revisions, this item introduces the concept of a potentially a reunification program. The proposed program, um, could provide support for individuals experiencing homeless who express a desire to reconnect with family or support networks in the geographical area where that support is located. By partnering with, uh, potentially with nonprofit organizations, the city might be able to facilitate voluntary travel or relocation assistance, ensuring that participants are connected to the appropriate services. The concept is modeled on similar programs adopted by other jurisdictions and offers a potentially compassionate and cost-effective assistance strategy. Um, I know that there was some, there was some interest expressed in potentially at least looking at this, so what I've d- provided are examples um, and samples of what I was able to find that cities are doing, um, and other programs throughout the state. For example, the city of San Diego, they have a, what they call their family unification program. It's operated actually by their Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, um, which is also known as the San, Downtown San Diego Partnership. That organization operates a variety of programs, addressing urban cleanliness, safety, and beautification, as well as care for unhoused individuals. Uh, the city of Oceanside provides a uni- reunification program to help, uh, people connect with friends and family, with staff communicating with all parties to find available stable accommodations and assist with travel expenses if needed. In the city of Long Beach, a community-based donation pool was created way back, so they've been on, they were on the, kind of on the front end of this, in nineteen ninety, to meet gaps in homeless deliver, services delivery, including relocation assistance. The funds are distributed to a number of service providers for uses that include relocation support and transportation assistance, such as subsidized bus vouchers. The city of Santa Monica launched a program called Project Homecoming in twen- in two thousand and six, a family reunification initiative that provides individuals experiencing homelessness um, with financial assistance and reconnecting with family and friends outside the region who agree to provide housing support. It's reported that between tw- uh, two thousand and six and twenty fifteen, the program assisted over sixteen hundred individuals in re- in reconnecting with support networks at about an average cost of two hundred and fourteen dollars per person. The city of San Jose launched a pilot program called Homeward Bound just this past year, um, in which the city will fund transportation costs for consenting unhoused residents and their loved ones willing to take them in. I've attached some, uh, information related to the, the programs in San Diego, San Jose, just, just for the council's reference. This, uh, agenda item in ju- just serves generally as an opportunity for the city council to review the draft ordinance and current resolution, consider and provide input on the provisions, and provide direction on whether to pursue the reunification program. Depending on feedback received, staff anticipates bringing back the ordinance for first reading at an upcoming meeting along with the draft resolution to establish program parameters, if so directed. And of course, this is really an open item, so if you guys have any other things you'd like us to look at or consider, um, regarding this issue, we could do that too as well. So. I'm here for questions, as is staff. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. We'll bring it back to council. Uh, we can open it up. Uh, start with Councilman Beltran. Do you have any comments?
I had a few clarifying questions I forgot to ask during our staff meeting. I know the original ordinance was, we were kind of being a little careful with not having to have the whole city basically covered. That was a problem. But now, kind of with this, uh, as far as we can extend to all public property, is that something that we already had in the original?
So the key, so, so here's where we're at. So even though we have the U.S. Supreme Court, it's not the last word, and there are starting to be, there are now more decisions being, really with the fight kind of directed at different issues than what was, cuz before it was all about, is it cruel and unusual punishment, right? And the U.S. Supreme Court found that no, these prohibitions are not. However, they did explicitly open the door for, or, and make it clear that that did not mean that you could still have due process, uh, problems. And so I think that, yes, and there are quite a few, there are quite, like, to answer your que- there are quite a few jurisdictions that have banned it. However, they are being, the ones that have outright bans on all public property are seeing probably more challenges with regard to that. And that's why you see with the state model that even though they're, they're purporting to do that, if you look at how they do the noticing, it really requires you to keep the, basically, it allows for extended camping so that you can provide the due process on the notice and enforcement. So it's not really, it's, it's a ban on prolonged camping anywhere, but not a ban on camping. So they've chosen the duration over the place. We've kind of done a little bit of a combination by not outright prohibiting everywhere. We, we can make the argument that we, we are providing due process there, and that then gives us the ability to have the shorter expedited timeframes. So I think there's a give-and-take situation going on. Um, i- i- it's not an exact science, and this is gonna continue, like, it's evolving, it's evolved, obviously, between, in the last year, between when we adopted this, but it's gonna continue to evolve, and we're gonna have to keep watching. The other area that we see a lot of, uh, that they're, they're seeing challenges is in, um, ADA law. So if you have specifically, you have, you, you know, unhoused individuals that also have, um, disabilities and restrictions, and they need to be in a specific place, they're, you know, they're making an argument, they need to be in a specific place due to services being provided nearby, they've been successful with those arguments as well, notwithstanding whether or not they should, you know, your ordinance says they can be there.
City Attorney, I, I have some input. Councilman Beltran, if you'd allow me here.
Sure.
And just comparing the city of Porterville to other cities in this matter for, uh, public spaces, what we provide for the homeless in our community with the navigation center, um, where we provide two meals a day, and then also restrooms and showers, and then we also provide the armory, that is another additional hundred beds that is not full. And so the difference between some of those other cities and the Martin versus Boise decision is we actually have somewhere for them to go. And so we're utilizing that tool in that aspect to, to kind of do the humane thing and, and try to help our fellow men get off the streets and into, uh, enclosed structure with some of those opportunities for what I would say, uh, return to normalcy. So I just wanted to make that input on what you had said.
I guess the, the part that stuck out to me was the all-public property, and I guess this would go to the chief. Is there some areas that, in the community that, that aren't necessarily looked over that, there's a gap in our coverage? That there's, there's some hotspots?
No, I think the, the, how the ordinance is set now is addressing the issues that we're having, uh, based off of the, the information and the numbers that I have in front of me. So I think that, I think that we're, we're addressing
There's no gap.
Based off the ordinance, and we have very few to little gaps in, in that right now.
Okay.
I think what we have seen, just from, and I think what we talked about before, so obviously, we had the issue under the bridges, right? So that was always prohibited, but, but what, it's being harder, it's harder to find because it's not as visible. So in, in, you know, there, so it's not as easy to spot, and then I think also we've seen some public, some private property, rather, some more involvement on private property. And I know that the, the police department has really shored up their procedures on being able to have, help homeowners, help us help them with-
I've definitely seen properties that were, uh, open in the past are now fencing or some type of barrier, so I have seen that. So it is having an impact in a, in a good way. A couple other questions was, uh, do we need to, uh, uh, in this, um, decision, do we need to find the entity that will then implement this, administrator of this?
So we talked, for what, for-
For the reunification side.
So there's a variety, this has been handled in a variety of ways. Some cities, I think, are doing it through nonprofit groups at, or other entities, and some are doing it them, directly themselves. I think that the ones I've, where I've seen it, it's been, it's had both ends, communication on both ends. That doesn't mean that you don't have other various forms of this program floating around that just, it's not as easy to spot, like, find the information. It's just what I was able to actually find about these, these programs, where they, you know, are mo- they all specified that they had some level of communication, not only with the in- individual that is unhoused, but also with, with support on the other side.
So, but we don't need to pick an entity or how we're gonna administer that right now?
Oh, oh, yeah, no, you wouldn't need to do that now, and, and really, it's just a matter, what we're trying to get tonight is if you're wanting to go, you know, work on such a program, we could start looking at putting something together for the council to then consider, and you guys could consider what, you know, whether you wanted to provide that through a nonprofit or-
And then we would have to consider funding that if, if we do go down that route.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Rivas?
I have, I have nothing.
Uh, Councilman Green?
Uh, no, nor do I.
Uh, Vice Mayor McCurvy?
Yeah, I just have a few comments. Um, great discussion, Raymond. Um, I, you know, there's still a lot of emotion on this issue everywhere you go, and even in the, in our chambers. In fact, before I was elected, I was the emotion out there in the audience, and I, I completely understand that. Um, we really do want to do the right thing, and it's, it's a difficult issue at times, and and we're making some real progress, I think, with these changes that we're making here. It's the next step forward logically, and we're making that transformation. And in one year, just think about this, this is one year since we made this, put this in, we've, and we've made some incredible strides towards helping a lot of people and cleaning up a lot of areas of our city, and doing it in a way that's professional and, and kind to those that are on the streets. And I, I really am just, uh, my hat's off to everybody that's been working on this because it's taken the whole community to do that. And I know I'm here- And I know I'm hearing a lot of people in the community saying, hey, it's getting better. And this is really important for us to make this next step, so thanks for putting this together. I think these are the next logical steps. And I'm really excited about the progress that we've been making, so thank you very much. I want to go with council recommendations and I would make a motion to go with council recommendations.
Well, I want to make comments first. So I would echo Vice Mayor, though, in the direction we're going in addressing the unhoused population in our city and we have taken a humane approach in trying to help and assist. Question that I have, I don't know if our chief of police would answer this or city attorney, but with private property, with us enforcing these laws, we are moving the homeless from public property and then they end up moving into private property and they're using private property as a tool to have an encampment. Does this update give the tools you need to? And let me add to that, what I don't like is sometimes when we go after the property owners that have an encampment that was forced onto their property and then we start fining them. I'd like to get away from that process. If they will comply with us and if we could work something out, that's the direction I want to go. Now, if a private property owner is saying, no, we want this encampment on our property, then there's another issue there where we would start fining because we have an illegal camping going on in our city. Will this update provide those tools?
So this particular update, actually, we didn't really need to change much because we have only just one small section on this and the, and the, like, really where the details are, are in the implementation of the policies. So I know that we've heard, you know, we have heard prior from the council and you that you guys want to make sure that we are not being overly harsh and that we're really working with, you know, to get voluntary compliance with property owners. And I believe that that's how our system has been, we're implementing the system. So, and if, I don't know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, code enforcement or the police department on that, so.
Yeah, we have a policy and a process in place that both code enforcement and our team go through a process with private property. We've gotten voluntary compliance. Now, there is, it does take a little longer when private property owners are absentee owners or not from this area, but we have a, we have a procedure in place. We get the no trespass forms notarized and then there's a process that we go through, either code enforcement or us. And then if we do not have compliance for a private property owner, then administrative process through code enforcement is implemented and notices are sent to the owner for compliance.
Right. So we, so the nice thing about the system for the private property owners is they are essentially able to sort of pre-approve our ability to get involved, right? And that's what they're, and that's what the trespass, like they're able to let us know ahead of time that we have the authority to enforce the no trespass, which then streamline it for them and helps prevent it from becoming a major issue for them to clean up. Really, that's the goal, before it becomes too bad. So I think we do have those instances, though, here and there, where we've either had an absentee owner or a maybe a diff, sometimes we have, occasionally we'll have a very difficult individual, you know, that we're dealing with. I think we've had both those situations. So what we are trying to do, though, is give grace to the private property owners, especially if they really are working diligently to work with us. I think where we have seen, if we've seen fines lately, hopefully they're just with the ones that are just being obstinate themselves and not wanting to necessarily help with the problem.
I appreciate that. I, a question I would add, just as we're going here and being transparent, with some of these empty lots in the middle of town where some of the people experiencing homelessness are moving to, do we do like an annual when, when the, it needs to be notarized again at a year's time? Do we go and notify them, hey, we need to renew this? Or do we just wait until there's an issue?
No, correct. So we keep it on electronic file at this point right now and it's notarized and it's good for one year. And then we are sent electronic alerts when that calendar year is up and then we reevaluate that notice. If the problem has been alleviated or fixed, then we don't re-up it unless there's, unless there's an issue. But all our notices are probably only a month or two old at this point, so, and electronically saved and sent to our commander in patrol.
Thank you for that. Thank you, city attorney. I want to commend code enforcement, parks and leisures, public works, our police department, fire department. I know you guys have been battling and working hard on this and there has been great strides, as the vice mayor said, in the past six months that we've all seen. I get countless constituents reaching out to me and telling us what a great job you all are doing. So I want to commend you for that. Keep up the great work. Thank you for adding teeth to this no camping policy. We're going to a 24-hour notice and from a 72-hour and 90 days of holding stuff to down to 60 now. And so this is good for the city of Porterville, good for the constituents of Porterville. And with that, I'd make a motion to go with, with the draft. Is it draft ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So I'd make a motion to go with the draft ordinance, if there's no other comments.
The only other comment I would say, and then I don't know if we're in consensus with the reunification program?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, the recertification, with the family, yeah.
Yeah, so that would actually be a second because Vice Mayor already made a motion, so I second that. If there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Okay, we're going to move to schedule banner number five. Let's find ourselves here. City manager?
Yes, Mayor, so we have item number five, which was the award of contract for the transit center renovation. Happy to go to the staff report, answer any questions. How would the council like to proceed?
Okay, the reason why I pulled this item is yesterday in our meeting, I gave a direction. And then Vice Mayor tried to give direction. I said, no, you got to take that before the council. And so I got to hold myself to the same standards, sir. So the direction that I gave, we are trying to make culture change in this city. Revive, in God we trust, revive the Americana culture. And some of that is seen through our bus wraps. So my request to the acting city manager is that for this renovation, that we try to push a theme of all-American theme, or all-America theme in the renovation. Maybe it's pitchers with the flag, maybe it's our city logo with our city motto. You guys are very clever and come up with ways to meet our vision, but that was what I wanted, the direction I gave. And I don't know if we need to take action on that or if we could just, would that be a recommendation to the agenda item?
I think that's, I think that's fine. I think you've seen where we've taken council's direction, the vision of the council, and you've seen that through the bus wraps, you've seen that through the rebranding of the bus stops. I think that is the intent of staff, is to continue that motto through the ongoing renovations and rebranding of our transit system. I don't know that it's necessary to go to that point of making the actual direction of it. We'll take that into consideration and we'll bring the details back to council should we need to, but I think that's the direction already, is to continue that theme through our transit operation and facilities.
Thank you. Acting city manager, is there any other comments?
I was just going to add, I like the idea and I don't know if this is something that we can implement for the arts commission, that this is the vision for the next few years, that anytime there's a public project like this that has to do with, whether it's the city pool, the, you know, parks or whatever, that that be the theme or motto, those be implemented somehow.
No, that's a great idea. Good addition.
Yeah, and I would just echo those comments. If you can add some heritage to that, a heritage flavor and/or mural type things that beautify the downtown, that would be great.
And just to clarify too, Mayor, so although it was not a direction change in the staff report, we will still need council's direction to accept the item.
Yes, gotcha. Councilman Rivas, did you have comments?
I just wasn't, was going to say, I echo your guys' sentiments pretty much. That was a great idea, Mr. Councilman Beltran.
Okay, Councilman Green, you good?
Excuse me?
You good? You wanted to make a comment?
No, no comment.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation on agenda item number five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Agenda item number six, acting city manager?
Yes, item number six, mayor, is authorization to operate a fare-free shuttle to the Freedom Fest on June 28th, 2025. It's been deemed the Freedom Express by staff and happy to take any comments from council, read staff report or provide comment for staff direction.
Okay, bringing it back to council, Vice Mayor McCurvy, you pulled this agenda item? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just want to add some clarification. I know that we're building towards a, you know, a great season to do the Freedom Fest and I really think that next year is going to build even more and we get an opportunity to get some ridership. I would like to make a suggestion on this item. Right now, it's coming from the regular stops, but we discussed briefly that it'd be great if we could select some areas in town that have a large parking and make that, and then add a stop and a pickup and a drop off, similar to what we've seen done in some other areas when you have a lot of logistics. So a suggestion was made that we could use a school property or maybe even a retail property like the Lowe's parking lot to add a stop. And so it's in conjunction with the routes already, but then we would have, we would have the ability to stop by an area on the edge of town perhaps and pick up riders and drop off riders so that keeps them out of the center of town and gives us some additional parking. And it doesn't take away from the routes, it might add a little bit of time, but that would be what I would want to add to this as we pass this, is a suggestion that we add a stop or two to help us with parking and make that process better for people in different parts of the city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think that's a great idea. Councilman Beltran, you got any comments?
Yeah, would that be for this year?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I had some questions about that as well. I thought Porterville, Manatchee, kind of both sides of the, you know, big parking lots, what have we, could collaborate. The other question I'd have for staff, and I haven't had a chance to, we'll figure this out, I guess, but if there was going to be an age limit for riders, you know, if there's going to be unattended minors that are 12, 13 years old that are going to be going out there unaccompanied, what type of liability does the city have? Because Freedom Fest is usually over about 10 o'clock, then you run into curfew. Who's in charge of these minors? So there's, I don't know if we're going to implement some type of, if there's a minor, they have to be accompanied by an adult, you know, something like a movie theater type situation? It just unfolds some other questions, so that's what I had in our staff meeting. I think behind the scenes, we could work on that more, but that was just a little concern I had, whether it's this year or the following year.
I, that's an interesting question and I know acting city manager Tree or Transportation Director Tree is not here, but, and he'd probably be best for answering this question, but how normally, I mean, I remember being 10, 12 years old riding the bus in town, so how does that work?
So happy to provide more information on that. I don't have all the details, but we do have minors that do ride Porterville Transit and we can coordinate that. If we can just wrap it all up in the end, I'm not sure how council would like to proceed with this item. If the item is acceptable to council tonight, we can accept the item or not accept the item or bring it back. I think what staff can do is come back with more of an informational update at the next meeting and provide you some feedback on minors riding the bus or what's intended for that, for that service. And then give us an opportunity to entertain council's interaction with staff currently on additional stops or how we can improve the service. I think it's ideal this year that we take the opportunity to evaluate the operation. As we know, we anticipate next year's celebration to be larger and probably more attendance. So at least that's, that's the goal, right?
Yes.
So through this opportunity this year, recognizing the, the chance to evaluate the operation, improve the operation and make it grow, essentially. So we have an initial consideration for services agreed upon on the service provider. So that gives us the initial service and we can bring back, like you said, just as brief as an informational item, addressing the ideas you provided and the information.
I'd make a motion to go with staff recommendation there.
I'll second that and also that information would be real vital for us if you can come back with that information with what Councilman Beltran and Mr. McCurvy.
On minors ridership?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a first and a second. We'll call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to AB 1234 reports. This is a time for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to government code 5232.3. All right, Tulare River Improvement JPA.
Just to provide an update, that mayor, we did not meet, that was.
It was all closed session.
No, that was a different meeting. It wasn't a meeting for this report, I apologize.
Okay. All right, moving on to Tulare County Task Force on homelessness, met May 21st. Councilman Rivas?
Yes, the task force met on the 21st of this year and the actions taken on these items were pretty interesting. So I'm just going to read a few items that were addressed and and, but no really, no real action was taken other than very informative, but here we, the first action items were the minutes that were approved and were accepted and no present change at the previous meeting to the pathway house, home plan. No suggestions, suggested changes were made by the task force members and it was adopted as presented. The next item was, were presentations beginning with the HAP6 funding application. A summary of the eligible use was outlined, highlighted that the priority is to fund interim housing and then permanent new and capital projects. The KTHA and Tulare County are waiting for, on clarification from the state on the definition of interim. Housing is, as some terminology in the NOFA, is not consistent with the terminology typical found in other grant fundings or similar uses. The next presentation was on the encampment meetings and asked that jurisdictions or agencies with mapping systems in place should meet to come up with a collaborative solution to map encampments without duplicating data entry. Additionally, the new template published by the state was mentioned as something that all jurisdictions can use or decide not to use, but they wanted to bring it out to light in case the group had not seen it before. That was a very interesting topic because as it stands, the state is asking you to do one thing, but there is no housing for these homeless people. So it's going to be interesting, once we get the big budget from the governor's office to implement this. But it's going to be pretty challenging for local and state and on this level. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that. And for the last item that was presented was the ED of the Tulare River Housing Authority, the tribe. And they reported on how they have used their allocation of ESG and HAP funding that they have received from the county, describing some major challenges in housing and for these homeless people. Lessons learned and continue needing for additional funding. And that pretty much wraps it up, but it's going to be challenging with this new budget coming along with the governor. It's going to be hard and with the strides, with the local, what we're doing, it's just going to have to wait and see how we, it's all going to turn out. So with that, I turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Okay, Eastern Tulie Groundwater Sustainability Agency, met May 23rd. Councilman Green?
Yeah, there was everything. ATGSA was all a closed.
Closed session.
Closed session, thank you. So there is nothing to report at this time.
Okay, moving on to Tulare County Economic Development Corp. I was not able to attend the meeting. I'm, was it Director Calderon? Did you attend the meeting? Could you please give a report out on that?
I did, yes. So the meeting took place May 28th. There was one, the item one was the approval of the minutes and financials. The board approved the minutes. From the April 25th meeting, the April financial report was also reviewed and approved. The second item was a presentation by Southern California Edison. SE shared information on their economic development services, including 12% energy savings program or five years available for businesses through the economic development rate. They also outlined other business support offerings such as training, assistance programs and potential access to financial incentives. The third item was a report that TCDC will be presenting its annual report to city council. They tend to leave gave a date of June 17th, however, that may change to give it more time for discussion. The fourth item was the upcoming reports, which were the financials for the year-end report and the annual SEDS, which is the comprehensive economic development strategy. And both of those were deferred for the next meeting, which is scheduled June 25th. and both of those were deferred for the next meeting, which is scheduled June twenty fifth.
Thank you, Director. Okay, lastly is Flag Day Committee. We met today. Today was our last meeting before the Flag Day event on June fourteenth. Locked in that the, we will be using the fire truck, ladder truck to lower the old flag and raise the new flag. Robert Lassetovich with the American Legion Post Twenty will be the M C. The invocation will be done by our police chaplain, Rippe. Alexandra, Assemblywoman Alexandra Macedo will be our guest speaker. The, this is a really special year, this, this year. We are dedicating Flag Day to a prisoner of war who's still alive and his name is Gary Thornton and he should be there, so I'm excited for that. We also have jumpers with the American flags that are going to be jumping in. They are locked in. The event is at ten A M at Grocery Outlet on June fourteenth. I, I do have one request on this report for city to help with marketing this event. Our police department, fire department, you guys are very popular in town. And so I was hoping that you guys could advertise individually on your webpages, on social media. And also we, we do it through parks. I don't want to leave you out. They're just a little more popular. But if we could use the, the city's social media influence to promote this, I'd greatly appreciate it. And then also there's, I'm, I'm missing stuff, uh-oh. So Nick Slater singing the National Anthem, which Nick Slater is, is awesome. He's like in between Hank Williams and Johnny Cash and he's just killer. I love it and he's local. And then the presentations of colors this year, we're going to have a new mix. It's going to be American Legion with our honor guard, our fire department's honor guard. So it's going to be a special event this year, really looking forward to it, excited. With that, we'll move on to oil communications. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes.
Okay, Sherry Shields again. Mr. Rivas, you exactly said it. There is no housing for homeless, zero. There is housing for families that can go to the welfare department if they have children and they can get some help. As far as a homeless man, a homeless woman, without kids, they get nothing. If you, and I know for a fact, because I was on a program that came out with, they have a new program called the General Relief Program for the homeless through the welfare department. They offer them twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents per week if they will come once a week, spend their time getting to the welfare program. They have to sit down, fill out a form and they have to provide thirteen jobs where they went and job searched, really. And then spend the time doing that and they will get a whole twenty-five dollars on their food stamp card. That's a real wonderful program. Y'all need to take this money, any extra money that you have or any that you can find, and you need to throw it to the King's View down there because King's View knows about homeless, they know what they're doing. There was not enough food. I took my son down there for a burrito. They were out of burritos by ten o'clock in the morning. There is not enough food down there every day to provide for the homeless that are out there. The showers are five minutes. You stand there, yeah, he appreciates a shower, but you know what? You got to be in a line. They only have two hours. They have it's first come, first service and whoever shows up. So it's rare to get a shower and a homeless person feels like a human being after they have a shower. I still say the police officers, where they used to carry teddy bears around for kids that were in need, they would have a better social, socialization with coming across a homeless person who is possibly on drugs, mental problems, if they would carry two or three sandwiches inside their trucks, cars, whatever, when they come upon those homeless people and hand them a sandwich and a, and a, and a bottle of water, make them feel like a human being before they start talking to them, because when they find them, they're hungry. It makes a different attitude with the homeless. I know because I, I deal with homeless. The thing about it is around here, yeah, you've got lots of families that are homeless, even they're real families. If you go look even on Orange Street where I live, it's a nice neighborhood, very nice, three hundred and fifty thousand and up, the houses for sale for five hundred and forty right now. And they've got trailers parked all over in between their houses and they're sitting there, you're not bothering those trailers and you know why? Their families are living in those houses. They're homeless, they're basically homeless, but their families are buying them nicer trailers to sit there and park and they're right out front, in front of everybody. Wrap it up, Sherry. Anyway, we got taco trucks around here, we got people riding around with corn. You know, when you buy that nasty piece of corn off that person on the street, how do, where do you think they're washing their hands at? I know an eighty-year-old woman right now who has imputago and, go ahead, buy that corn off that street. They're not washing their hands. Things aren't being done. How do you think the homeless feel when they can't wash their hands? We've got disabled people all over the place. I could sit down there on one of those corners and you couldn't do anything to me and you're not going to be able to do it to people in the parks or anything.
Thank you, Ms. Shields.
Have a great day. Give it to King's View, let them work on it.
I'm not seeing anyone else in the chambers. Is anyone online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move on to other matters. Councilman Rivas.
I have nothing.
Okay, Councilman Green?
Neither do I.
Councilman Beltran?
Well, the summer brings the busy time. Just want to recognize what a great Memorial Day service out at Hillcrest with Avenue of Flags. Shout out to all the volunteers. I heard from one of the individuals that they saw the council members out there. So great job, guys, representing our community and out there helping support those events. Military banner ceremony, just a couple of days before this. I mean, it was just all around. It's a great field. Manatchee band performed at that, I believe, since inception, so it was great to see the youth, this local schools involved, helping with that successful program. I can't believe I forgot last time to, you know, recognize the mothers. It was going to be Mother's Day and nobody ever mentioned it. So sorry, mothers out there, that we didn't recognize you, we apologize, but it's the guys' turn. So happy Father's Day to all you gentlemen, whether you have children or not, you might be an uncle, a grandparent to a child. Male mentorship is very important in society. A lot of times we, men in TV shows or movies are the buffoons and are the laughable characters in a family, but, you know, I, I see great men sitting up here, being role models for their families. And so I just want to wish all those in whatever capacity you are as a male figure in somebody else's life, hope you're celebrated and recognized. Again, the public recognition earlier to open up our session with the first responders, the teachers, administrators and the family and the teacher. Just great to see that public recognition. Nobody wants to be highlighted on, on a day like that, but for that family, you know, for the, for the young lady, you know, that is going to be traumatizing. But I also want to just, let's not forget the suspect in our prayers. There's a lot of mental health issues going on in the community or throughout society in general and it's unfortunate whatever his family's going through and, you know, although we know, we, we speak of, you know, evil things that have happened, I don't believe people are born evil like that and so don't forget to pray for that individual and what he's going to be going through in being held accountable. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Vice Mayor McMurvy?
Yeah, I, I'll echo some of those comments about the banner ceremony and the Memorial Day. It was great, the medley that they have for the armed forces is really well done. And Manatchee was doing it in the banner ceremony up in the balcony and then when we were out at the Memorial Day ceremony, Porterville Band was doing a similar medley and we were right there and Buck Schaefer's headstone is right there and they were performing right there. I thought that was cool. I mean, I remember Buck, he used to be a neighbor of ours, but it was a great time to celebrate the veterans and honor the veterans and, and it's great to see so many people from the community out there and dedicating their time and putting out those flags and doing all of that. It's a lot and hopefully we can get some new flag poles put out there and make it even better going into next year. It was great to be at this spillway dedication this past week. So that's a, they said it was a thirty-year project. Boy, it was something. Eighty-four thousand acre feet was the old capacity, one hundred and twelve thousand acre feet is the new capacity, so it's twenty-eight thousand acre feet more, which, you know, in twenty twenty-three, that would have made the difference and taken a lot of the risk out of the problem that we just had in twenty-three. So we're looking forward to having that additional storage and additional protection in some of these difficult years that we have from time to time. So it was great to see everybody out there. The weather cooperated and the water's already up against the spillway, they call it the weir and it was a great presentation from the Colonel and from the electeds around the valley. It was great to see everybody there finishing and dedicating that project. I had the pleasure of going to Kelly West's funeral today. And I want to talk about that a little bit because, you know, I've known the West family for about forty years and had a great conversation with Pastor Mark today about Kelly's involvement in the city and how he was instrumental in getting In God We Trust in these chambers and getting it on the ballot in his, in his time. And it was great to have so many people come together to celebrate the life of Kelly and I, I got to talk to Roy Ashburn and, you know, Roy was talking about some leaders in our community that were actually chair people in some of his committees and what Roy told me is he said that, yeah, it was great to have these great leaders and, and chairpersons up in the State House, but Kelly West was the champion. He was the guy that was pushing everybody. He was the guy that was running around, working at Helping Hands and, and making things happen around the community, just nonstop. And, you know, he was, June fifth of this year, he would have been married to Janice seventy-three years. And, you know, I went to Janice's funeral about thirty-three days ago. So she died on April twenty-second and he died on May twenty-second. And just a great family legacy. The funeral for them, it's, it's a strange thing to say, but it was, it was a lot of joy in the funerals for those two. They were leaders in our community, family values. They have a legacy of kids and grandkids and success and, and giving back to the community and the church and just, they gave it all. And it's just a great opportunity to celebrate the life and the death and, and the West family because they, they've done so much for this community. So I want to say something about that and, and just add a little bit of layer of my own thoughts on it. Going to be missed. I know we're going to fly the flag half staff and we'll continue to work with the, the younger West family, that, oh, Kevin's a chip off the old block and, you know, I, I have this story. I used to walk my dog down on Main Street about twenty years ago and I'd walk my dog about four in the morning. I like to be out when there's nobody out and it's cool, especially in the summer. And, you know, there were at least two times that I almost got ran over on Main Street by a white pickup truck coming around the corner, getting, going to get coffee to go work on something in the city and it was Kelly West just rolling down Main Street and he, I mean, he couldn't sleep at night, I guess, but I always enjoyed conversing with him and he would go around to the businesses around town and he would get hams and he'd get turkeys and he'd get donations and we'd save them up and we would go deep pit. This is twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five years ago. We would go in deep pit for the Helping Hands and we'd fed thousands of people around this community over the years and, and Kelly did that without fanfare. He did, he didn't want recognition for it, we just did it. And it was just, it's a great opportunity for us to just reflect on that and I just wanted to say that to everyone here that knew Kelly and, and just say that it was great to sing some songs and think about all the great things in his life and, and the legacy that he left for our city. So I wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I know Mr. West, the former mayor of Porterville was a close family friend of yours, so thank you for sharing that story and we will be honoring his legacy and what he accomplished as a councilman and mayor of the city of Porterville next council meeting and then we'll be flying our city flag at half mast for a week in his honor. So with that, I'll, I'll move on to, for myself, was reached out to Diane Pierce, a group was reached out to myself and Vice Mayor by Diane Pierce Pro Ten Mayor of Clovis. It was for addressing the C I F championship, state championship for track and field and for girls' sports. There was a biological male that ended up winning three different medals, two first-place medals and a second-place medal in track and field. And she reached out for support and, and protesting this and unfortunately I wasn't able to make the, the event, but I, I wrote a support letter. I saw it in the newspaper today. It's in the Porterville Recorder if you'd like to see what my statements were on that. You know, I, I just can't help but think throughout the country this year, boys have stolen girls' state titles in California, Maine, Washington, Oregon and Minnesota. And in the Olympics, this last Olympic cycle, we had two males win gold medals against women. And so as leaders, and I know this council took a strong stance for protecting women safe spaces, but as leaders or lesser magistrates in our community, we have to continue to speak about this, we have to be bold because silence is acceptance and this is, this is wrong and it's deeply unfair, as Gavin Newsom said, and, and I oppose it with all of my soul. I also wrote down with Vice Mayor McMurvy, we, we met with Pat Burns and Butch Twining. Pat Burns is the mayor of Huntington Beach and, and Mr. Twining is a council member. We met to talk about the Alliance of Charter Cities throughout the state and, and trying to unite charter cities to start working together to fight for home rule. So we went over some bylaws and our mission statements. It was a great time, great time with strong leaders and looking forward to seeing what the future has for the city of Porterville. It was a great honor to celebrate our military banner ceremony. Great job to Parks and Leasures on setting that up. Great job to our police department, make sure we had a, a good, safe environment. It, it's such an honor to, to be able to sit and, and be the one that's naming these names, these veterans that served our community and, and I'm, I'm going to tie this into Memorial Day as well, you know, going out and setting up flags, planting flags over World War Two veterans, World War One veterans, Spanish-American War, Vietnam. And as you're going over hundreds of graves, hundreds of graves, planting flags, we are a community of warriors, patriots, men that were willing to storm the beaches of Normandy, men willing to pay the ultimate sacrifice on Gettysburg, men willing to cross the Delaware. That's the kind of people that live in Porterville and so it's just a great honor to be a part of it, to, to be at the Memorial Day. It was just, it's a beautiful service, recognizing the men and women that paid the ultimate sacrifice for our community. I am looking forward to replacing those flag poles, Vice Mayor, and we're just waiting on American Legion to get us some numbers, but it's, it's needed and I'm looking forward to it. Challenged by the fire department for the Murphy Challenge, which I did attend, but I did zero percent of the Murphy Challenge. When they said two hundred push-ups, two hundred pull-ups, two hundred sit-ups and two miles with twenty pounds, those days are gone, man. So I, I, I went and I supported them in spirit, but they weren't getting me to do any of that. I did hit the fire pole, so I, I, I was successful, came down, landed correctly. They challenged me to then climb the fire pole and once again, zero percent effort on that as well. Sad event happened, the fig tree for Captain Figaroa and firefighter Jones was ripped out, it was disgraced. It's so unfortunate. I have a feeling it was someone that didn't even know what it represented. To the firefighters that went and tried to save the tree and then went and spent their own money and put flowers in that, that sacred spot, thank you. I also attended the spillway women cut. It's a great honor to be with, you know, Congressman Vince Fong, our county supervisor, Dennis Townsend, Vice Mayor and my colleagues here. Great event. Yes, you are correct, twenty-eight thousand acre feet more. Yes, you are correct, 28,000 acre feet more. Vince Fong said, for the layman, it's 9.1 billion gallons of water behind Lake Success Extra, which is good for farmers, good for our community. Really looking forward to continue to see that lake fill up, it's a beautiful sight being back there. Now, I gotta say, Vice Mayor, there was 11,000 cubic feet flowing over between the spillway and the dam, we had 11,000 cubic feet a second flowing down the river, so I don't know if that thing would've stopped it, but it's worth seeing what it can't do. Excited about Agenda Item Number Four, Main Street Reconstruction, All Out to Grand, this is what I campaigned on. Thank you to staff for giving this community a win, it's huge. Agenda Item Number 25, No Camping Ordnance, we're adding teeth to an ordinance that has been needed for so long, we've been living like a third world nation, and this is huge for our community. You know, some of the comments tonight, about where's the money, we're cruel to the homeless, you know what's cruel? Is allowing them to just do whatever they want. We've lost the Sears Building to a fire on Main Street, caused by the homeless. We've just recently had $250,000 worth of damage on Plano Bridge and Porter Saloo, in our city, within this year. And then, we also saw the iconic Porter Theater burned to the ground, because homeless were in, doing what homeless do. We have to continue forward and stay strong on this issue, and deliver for the people of Porterville. And I know that you men and women here, the staff is gonna get that done, and I have great pride in that, and knowing that you guys will. So, with that, adjourn the meeting. Acting City Manager, do you have any comments?
Given that we are encroaching on a record time for a council meeting, I would love nothing more than to make it more difficult for interim city manager, Mr. Tree, to beat the time. I would just like to say, with the recognition and everything tonight, I know staff and others serve not only as members of our community, but to serve our community at our daily jobs as well, continue to be impressed by those in our community, and those that are coworkers within the city, just being able to see everybody in action. Quick response to our community, providing those services in a time of need, continues to impress me, and I know, as we look to one another in support and service in the community, it just continues to drive us, and I thank public safety for all their efforts, I thank the community for their strength, and appreciate council's services tonight, and everybody's efforts. Thank you very much for allowing me to serve council tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Acting City Manager. Night, with that, meeting is adjourned at 8:21.